In favor? And that passes. Do we have any announcements or presentations?
No, sorry, it's separate motions. You can't take them as one. Now, I would like to make a motion to add an item under staff items for the appointment of the new assistant city manager.
I would like to make a motion? Or you made the motion?
I made the motion.
We got a second? Any discussion on that item? And can we? All in favor? And that passes. Thank you, Councilman Vif. Now, do we have any announcements or presentations? That would be no. Fantastic. So we'll move on to public hearing, and I need to read the rules for the public hearing for zoning matters. The hearing shall be presided over by the mayor. After calling the hearing to order, the mayor shall request the parcels of property which are the subject of zoning proposal be identified in red. Following such identification, reading the development director's recommendation shall be presented. The mayor's city council shall cause the director's written recommendation to be made part of the record. Proponents of each proposed zoning decision shall then be allowed a total of 10 minutes for presentation of data, evidence, and opinion concerning the zoning decision. If all 10 minutes are not used, the proponents' remaining time may be reserved for rebuttal. Opponents for each proposed zoning decision then be allowed a total of 10 minutes for presentation of data, evidence, and opinion concerning each zoning decision. The presentation times may not be reduced but may be extended by majority vote, provided they are expanded equally for proponents and opponents. Anyone wishing to speak must come up to the microphone and give their name and address to the city clerk. Do not speak unless you have the microphone and have been recognized. And with that? John?
Mayor Protam, council members, others. My name is John Maxmuck. I'm Director of Planning Development. I'll be presenting the one and only variance request for tonight. The other one on the agenda was postponed until January. So the one we're focused on is 3031 Schallford Road. The BIA Charter School Incorporated, care of Jill Flornoy, who's here, has applied for three variances and three waivers from our Unified Development Ordinance for the construction of a tennis and racquetball complex there on 3031 Schallford Road. And this is on the east side of the road. Did I get it clear? I have a clicker, thank you. This is located on the east side of the road directly next to Dynamo Multi-Sport, the swim complex, if you're familiar with that. Some people may remember a clinic on this site in the near past. So this in 2018, it was demolished, and right now, the lot is mostly covered with low scrub and trees. And on to the applicant's requests. So tonight, we, like I said, we have three variances and three waivers. A variance from Section 230-6 of the UDO to exceed the maximum height of fences in the front yard from four feet to 10 feet. Four feet is the max, and 10 feet is what's being requested. A variance from Section 230-6 to not provide a fence that is 50% transparent in the front yard. The requirement calls for 50% transparency or more. And then, third variance is from Section 250-7 to locate off-street parking between the principal building and the street. So our ordinance doesn't allow that. In this case, the applicant has requested that we allow that. The applicant requests three waivers from the Unified Development Ordinance. The first, 230-26, to allow the supplemental zone to not be hardscaped and to exceed 20% of maximum landscaping permitted within the area. Should say that all three of these waivers are related, and they have to do with streetscape in our design criteria. A waiver from Section 230-26 to not locate the front building facade immediately adjacent to the supplemental zone. And then a waiver from Section 230-27 to not provide direct access and visibility from the primary building to the adjacent street. So you see that these three waivers are very closely interrelated. And moving on, we provide you with a glimpse at a previously approved DCI for this site, which is no longer applicable, just to set the record straight. And we move on to the proposed plan that we're focused on here tonight. Again, this is not about the use. This is about the three waivers and the three variance requests that make it work. And then, you'll see after a brief description, the constraints at the site. So you have up to 11 pickleball sites at the east end of the property, and then you have three tennis courts up against the street. And then, associated parking that connects to the swim club next door. You also have a stormwater facility, the far right side, that exists now. And you have, at the top of the site in gray, you have an auxiliary parking area that Dynamo uses. So those are the central features of the site. The site slopes from the street downward towards the east. Moving on to the next page, we have a couple of inset maps that show some of the details of the site plan, and then the grading plan. More details on the grading plan for each of the areas. I'll note here that the applicant found that the best place for the tennis courts were close to Schallford Road and not at the other end. We had discussed switching those, but we were convinced that the best place for the tennis courts is actually by the street because of the amount of space needed, flat space needed for the tennis courts, and the topography that you have at that site. The angle of the courts has to do with solar angle and something related to the sport of tennis itself. Moving on to the tree protection plan. Thank you, Blake. We have a tree planting proposal that makes up for the 1,197 inches in inches at diameter of breast height that exists on the site now. And after removal and then replacement, the applicant will meet the tree requirements in play. 1,197, though, is the existing amount, and that is a discrepancy from what you may see in your materials. Get back to trees in a little minute when we talk about conditions, if you will. Next is the photometric plan, which is a discussion of lighting. And this is important because it will be a nighttime, daytime facility, and we are dealing with residential uses to the south and to the east. And so this is important for the sort of land use. And the applicant has generously provided a lot of details behind the graphics that you see for the photometric plan. And those exist on the following slides, and those are in your materials. Shows basically a measure of brightness at any given spot on the courts and around the courts. And I believe you have, in the first graphic that I showed you, it shows you the amount of, if you could go back, please. There you go. There's a very vivid description of how much light falls on the courts and how much does not, or the light spill, if you will, outside of the fences. It's fairly well-contained and on purpose that way. Might also note at this time that noise is an issue that we addressed in our discussions and is being mitigated in two ways. Because as many of you might know, pickleball, when played with a regulation ball, is somewhat loud. Certainly a lot louder than tennis. And so the applicant has proposed to put up certain noise barrier walls around the courts. And I'm sure that they'll be able to explain that a little bit later. Staff is also proposing that we bank as many trees as possible along the south and east borders to add to that sound barrier. You could see some of them there on that photometric plan. We're going to skip back forward past photometric plan slides to some of the views of the property as it exists today. You have the former use, has a sign still there. Otherwise, the rest is pretty much wooded. It is a wooded patch of land that you see around the bend when you're traveling on So this time, I want to talk about the staff recommendations. So these are the concepts that the staff has found, given the criteria in the Unified Development Ordinance and considerations that the council can have for these. So based on our analysis, staff recommends approval of the following variance request, that is the variance from Section 250-7 to locate off-street parking between the principal building and the street. So why is that? It has to do with the topography. And since I explained that the best place for the tennis court is up by the street, that means that the associated building that goes with the courts has to go somewhere else, and that runs into the UDO, because we want buildings to be up against the street, namely, so that the parking can be somewhere else, not facing the street. The building is not the primary focus of this development. It's the courts. So that plays into it as well. So staff recommends approval. Moving on, staff recommends approval of the following waiver requests, all three, in fact. And we went over all of those, and they have to do with the streetscape. So the applicant is still providing what we call a modified streetscape for the site with a 10-foot walkway that hopefully, in the future, we'll see in the rest of Schallford. But it doesn't have all the provisions, all the design provisions that Section 230 calls And then, based on the analysis, staff recommends denial, however, of the following. The variance to exceed the maximum height of fences in the front yard from four feet to 10 feet. There's, the reason being is that we didn't find a hardship in screening the view of a fence from the road, and we think that the applicant can do something there otherwise, then put up a 10-foot fence. So happens that 10-foot fence is very helpful for the game of tennis, because not all the balls go on the court. So I can attest to that. And then a variance from Section 230-6 to not provide a fence that is 50% transparent in the front yard. We don't see a hardship, and we don't see a reason why fence can't be transparent, or can't be not transparent. Staff recommended conditions of approval. Bear with me on this. They are somewhat lengthy, but although we don't have a reason to oppose the project, we just find that there are some things that we need to mitigate in exchange for the variances being granted and for the two denial requests that we have. So bear with me. A development plan that's provided that's substantially similar to what you've seen, that's the first, that's standard. Second is the applicant shall prepare a landscape plan that fully screens the view of the tennis court from the right away, year-round. And that's the key point, is a year-round screening. And then we provide some details there as to how we get to that point. Third is the fencing along and visible from Schallford Road shall be decorative and not constructed of chain link. Now, I'd argue that most tennis courts probably have chain link fence, but we're trying to rethink that, at least from the areas visible from the street. Fourth is the applicant shall install adequate sound and shield light barriers to the greatest extent to protect the adjacent neighborhood to the east and south from the negative impacts from noise and light. As I mentioned, the applicant has provided some noise barriers within the fences for the pickleball courts. Staff goes a little bit farther, that maximum tree and shrub planting shall be provided in these areas as well, and that we would look at these plans during site plan review. And then five, the applicant shall provide an ADA-compliant pedestrian access point into the site from Schallford Road. And that's principally from the sidewalk, or this 10-foot sidewalk that we're putting in, to the building. And we didn't see that so far. So I think that's something that the council should strongly consider. Six, and we're getting there. The applicant shall install a 10-foot wide trail along Schallford Road as described in the 2023 Master Trails Plan, East Side Connector. And this is Trail Segment 3D, if you're keeping score. The trail shall include a seven-foot landscape strip and a 10-foot sidewalk, and final design shall be approved by Parks and Recreation Director. Seven, the applicant shall remove the existing pylon sign on the property prior to issuance of CO. And then eight, the applicant shall make improvements to the existing stormwater management facility, the one that I mentioned on the far east side, commensurate with the capacity, especially if it exceeds the capacity of what's there now. And some level of maintenance will have to be taken into account there, too. Nine, the applicant shall provide additional tree plantings north of the proposed retaining wall and shared parking spaces on 3119 Schallford Road. And then the applicant shall provide access egress at Schallford Road so that vehicles may not turn left onto Schallford Road eastbound. This is on there now. The distinction, though, is that the current site plan shows a slip lane that allows drivers to move more quickly. Under the plan and under the recommendations, we're actually trying to enhance the pedestrian experience on Schallford Road with the wide sidewalk and some streetscape amenities. We don't want to go backwards and have a slip lane that increases the ease of the traffic coming from the site up the hill and then out onto the street. And then likewise, from Schallford into the site quickly. So we're recommending more of a 90-degree angle there and use accepted traffic mitigation standards to make that all happen. And we think that the applicant sign can work within that concept just as well. So those are 10 recommendations of conditions of approval. And again, we're approving the waivers, all three waivers, one of the requested variances, and then pushback on two of the variances.
Thank you, John. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in favor of the item? If so, please come to the microphone and state your name and your relationship to the project.
And just for, keep things moving, we got a 10-minute timer for this. I'll be keeping track of that, although don't.
Members, thank you. I'm Jill Flornoy. My address is 3019 Pangborn Road, Indicator, 30033. I am the proposed developer of the property. So during our negotiations with Brookhaven Innovation Academy, when I wanted to buy the land, they asked me if I would agree to honor the shared parking agreement that they had with a neighbor, which is the nonprofit Dynamo Swim Club. And the reason for the shared parking is to alleviate some of the congestion on swim days for Dynamo by offering another entrance and egress to the property that they could share, and then adding some additional parking spaces. And I thought this was a great idea, and so I did agree to that at my own expense. If the parking lot is going to be shared and it's going to be in the middle of the property, then it makes the most sense that that building that we're talking about is going to be in the middle of the property. When you're thinking of the building, though, keep in mind that it's just two bathrooms and a check-in area, similar to maybe what you would see at a public park. The main features of the property are the courts. So it's not a big building, and so not only is it good for the accessibility of the building to be in the middle, close to the parking lot, but if it were up at the road, as the ordinance suggests, then we would have to have kind of an awkward, handicapped accessible ramps going up and steps. And also, there's another ordinance that it would conflict with that says that if you have a building at the top of the road, it can't be bathrooms. And so then you create a conflict there. So if we're going to have the parking lot in the middle and the building is going to be next to it, then what would happen is our fencing would go from the bathroom all the way around the courts. If you could show the picture, that would be great of the property. And there's a reason that all tennis courts in the United States are enclosed in chain link fence. It not only provides a security barrier for people, you know, not having access, but it also keeps the balls from going out, and these fences are generally 10 to 12 feet high. I don't know of another material to use to enclose tennis and pickleball fences than chain link. It's reasonably priced, because it's a lot of fencing, and it provides that security as well as the ball control. I think that the reason that there was an ordinance about fencing is that you don't want an ugly industrial fence across the property. But my fencing, as you can see in the picture, is not going to be across the property. The only fencing near the road is going to be the corner of that tennis fencing, and it'll be hidden by the trees. So I would like for you to allow me to put chain link fence up surrounding the property for those reasons. Now, the reason the courts are tilted is because the United States Tennis Association requires the courts be built in a north-south orientation, but I actually think that it gives a really nice frontage to the property and allows me to keep some of those old-growth trees, which is really important for the look of, for the community. So besides the variance request concerning some of the recommendations for conditions, there's two things, I think, that go together. The ADA walkway from the top of Schallford Road going down to the building and the 10-foot pathway. This property is an island. There's no contiguous sidewalk. There is no bike path. There is no access to the other side of the road. There's not even a walkway on the other side of the street next to the park. And so who is walking on this road? They would actually have to be walking or wheeling on Schallford Road itself, which would be extremely dangerous. So I don't know what, who would be using the walkway, and it's expensive to create it, and I don't think it would get any use. I understand that you have to balance the idea of the future. I know you want this beautiful corridor, and I think that's a wonderful idea. Maybe you could make it a condition that I put the walkway in when that's ready to be done. And so that honors kind of the essence of making a corridor and makes me responsible for doing it, but doing it in a reasonable timeframe when there's actually somebody that could use it. There's not even a parking lot you could park to and walk over. It's just not that kind of property. And so I would ask that that not be a condition. And I think most importantly on the other condition is prohibiting customers from turning left from Schallford Road into the property is really unreasonable, and it creates a safety concern, in my opinion. So when Brookhaven Innovation Academy was going to develop this property, the traffic study was done, there was going to be a ton of people coming for dropping off kids in the morning, picking up kids in the afternoon. That was going to create a lot of cars jammed up twice a day. We're not going to have that any longer. And in fact, if you prohibit turning left into the facility, you're going to force my customers to turn around at some point. So they're either going to do a U-turn, which is illegal and unsafe, or they're going to go down to the next available left turn, which is a residential street that doesn't have a call-to-sack or any way to turn around. The only way for them to turn around would be to enter somebody's driveway, back up, and go back out to Schallford. So you're basically setting me up to aggravate the neighbors. I want to be a great neighbor. I do not want to cause anybody grief, and I just think that that's practically what's going to happen if you can't turn left into the facility. There's no, it's not going to be the same use as the school, and I think it's kind of unfair that nobody else has restricted access to there. And again, the reason behind that, creating that to make it safe for pedestrians just doesn't exist because there aren't any pedestrians. There's no reason for anybody to be walking on that section of Schallford Road. So those are my comments respectfully. Thank you so much for your time.
Is there anyone out there that would like to speak in favor, additionally, like to speak in favor of this?
Council, my name is Ally Jett. I live at 2525 Brookdale Drive, and I was a Shambly resident for 11 years until I moved just over the border, a couple miles from Schallford on this area. I serve as treasurer and finance chair for the BIA School, the current owner of this property, and I thought it might just be helpful for especially newer members of the council to have a little bit of history about this parcel. The BIA School currently has a middle school and elementary school campus in South Gwinnett. We actually educate several City of Shambly students. We acquired this parcel with the intention, as we were outgrowing our space in South Gwinnett, to create a second campus. So we could have an elementary school at our existing campus, and we were going to have a middle school campus at this new area. And then because of the topography concerns and escalating construction costs, our plan just became unfeasible. So we let that property sit for a little while while we figured out what we wanted to do. And so ultimately, we decided that the best course forward for our school and to improve and expand our student body to include more students, including hopefully more City of Shambly students, is to expand our current facility, like basically go up. And so we decided that the appropriate thing to do was to put this property on the market. It has been on the market for years. We got one contract previously before that. The buyer wanted to build townhomes on this property. They ultimately withdrew their contract because of zoning conditions that they could not meet and make their project feasible. The only other interested buyers we have had before Ms. Flornoy came were self-storage facilities, land speculators, and somebody who wanted to build an auto shop. And like I said, I was a Shambly resident for 11 years. I live very close to this place now. I don't find any of those types of facilities as being as community building, as a recreational complex, when you put Dynamo and this place together. But we have made a commitment to our school to expand our facilities in our current place. We like this program, or this potential project that Ms. Flornoy has come up with. Personally, I'm in favor. The board is excited about it. In your materials, you will see letters of support, not only from Dynamo, but also the St. Pius School is very excited to have this complex available to its community. But if we can't make this work with Ms. Flornoy, we know what our pool of buyers are. None of us are super excited about that, so we would just really like to encourage council to consider Ms. Flornoy's request. I think it will really be great for the City of Shambly. Thank you.
About 19 seconds left for the proponents. Anybody want to speak for 19 seconds? All right. Is there anybody out there that would like to speak against or in opposition of this Excellent. We'll move on to the next thing. Please stick around. I'm sure there'll be questions from council. All right. We don't have any public hearings, non-zoning today, and I don't believe in any staff reports, so that will get us down to old business and approval of minutes. Under approval of minutes, we have three sets of minutes. Does anyone have any discussions or concerns? All right. So that brings us down to announcement items. Tree permit sign ordinance, we'll have a second read at the Tuesday City Council meeting, and that will bring us to new business. So we will begin with House Bill 581 discussion.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. So as you know, the Georgia General Assembly passed the House Bill 581 legislation, and it was signed into law by Governor Kemp earlier this year. That started a series of things that, legal processes, including a referendum that was on your ballot to change the that was on your ballot, uh, to change the, the state constitution, um, and include a floating homestead exemption, which is what we're going to focus on this evening. There's several components to House Bill 581, um, including the statewide floating homestead exemption. There's some, um, there's a new local option sales tax that we're really not going to spend a lot of time on just because it's probably frankly not going to apply to us. Um, and then some property tax procedural changes, which I won't get into. You can, um, read the additional information that's in the packet on that. Um, but wanted to really focus on, um, the floating homestead exemption because there are several things that the city is going to have to do, um, in the next couple of months, uh, depending on how you guys would like to proceed with, uh, the, um, floating homestead exemption, uh, provision of the bill. So House Bill 581 implements a statewide floating homestead exemption, um, for all local governments. So that includes counties, cities, and school boards. Um, the floating homestead exemption is a special type of homestead exemption. Um, and as you can see, it's designed to offset and reduce, or reduce the increases in taxable value to the properties, um, within the city. Um, this is also referred to as a base year or value offset exemption. Um, and, uh, you'd see this kind of commonly with, uh, freezes that are built in. Um, some cities have, uh, homestead exemptions by way of a tax freeze. So, um, I'm not going to get really into, you know, how it all works, but you can see here that, um, you know, basically it, it's a floating exemption as that value increases, the exemption floats with that increase. Um, so the, the taxpayer with the float would still pay the base year tax. So it's a little complicated right now to try to figure out the exact impact of the floating homestead exemption because we don't necessarily know that, as you know, our, our fiscal year starts January 1st. So we are predicting or projecting a year, you know, essentially six to eight months out of, uh, what our property taxes will look like in a given year. Um, and we do that every year. It's a little bit of a challenge just by way of the way that our fiscal year is set and with how the county determines the, uh, tax digest and the valuation of properties. Um, so if we take, uh, if we look at the, the floating homestead exemption, um, it's adjusting and the base year value is adjusted and will increase by a rate of inflation determined by the State Department of Revenue. Um, so that is probably going to be CPI. We haven't got exact direction from the state on that at this time. So for homes receiving this exemption in a taxable year, which would be 2025, um, the base year assessed value will be the 2024 assessed value. Um, and so, uh, homes first receiving the exemption in, in later years, the, for homes that first receiving the exemption in later years, the base year assessed value will be the assessed value, um, for the immediately preceding year. So trying to project this out is a little bit of a challenge at this point in time. Um, but, um, this will obviously have an impact to, uh, the, the tax digest, the valuation of property, and of, of course, ultimately, how the city's, um, main primary source of revenue is, comes in, which is our property tax, uh, property tax revenue. Um, and so the floating exemption, uh, uh, will take the taxable value of a home that may only increase at a rate of inflation each year, um, and essentially controlling this will control how much the value of a property can increase annually. Um, homeowners already granted a homestead will receive this exemption automatically and non-homesteaded properties or commercial properties will continue to be, um, evaluated at fair market value. So this only applies to homesteaded properties. It doesn't apply to anybody that doesn't receive a homestead exemption as it is. So the new flows, floating homestead exemption, um, is in addition and not in lieu of our currently existing exemptions that we already have. Um, so as you know, the city has $50,000 base homestead exemption. We also provide senior exemptions, um, and I believe there's a disabled veteran exemption in there as well. Um, so this would be in addition to those already existing exemptions. So if there is an existing local floating homestead exemption, the taxpayer will receive whichever of the two, this is, um, I'm sorry, to go back, this is a little complicated, so keep in mind. So if, if we had a tax freeze, this would replace that. Um, so it would be either or if, if we had a tax, uh, tax freeze. So if we, we already have the base homestead exemption of $50,000, that would be in addition to, if we had a freeze, it would be in lieu of. So the way that the law is written, governments, local governments can opt out of the floating homestead exemption. Um, there's only one opportunity to do this, which is why we are talking about it tonight. Um, and so at the beginning, the, the law will take effect on January 1st. And, um, at that point in time, if any of the municipalities or counties that are looking to opt out of this homes, floating homestead exemption, um, they will have to basically go through a series of, of public hearings and a process, an advertising process that looks very similar, if not almost identical, to the setting of the millage rate. Um, and so, uh, you have to do all of that and take all those steps by, uh, March 1st of this year, I mean, of next year, I'm sorry, 2025. Um, and so, uh, that's, at that point in time, we'd have to file with the Secretary of State what we've opted out of, um, if we decide to go in that direction. And of course, hold those three public hearings, which are, um, have to be advertised and they have to have a week in between each of them. So it, it becomes a little bit of a lengthy process, very, um, specific process that they have taken on. Um, and so after that point, we would then pass a resolution saying that we would seek to opt out. If you guys want to opt in to the floating homestead exemption, um, you don't have to do anything. So it, it really mirrors that rollback rate process with the millage. So, um, and so the reason this is a discussion item tonight is because we can't, can't actually do anything until January 2025. Um, and so if, I mean, if we are to do anything with it, uh, we can't actually do anything with it until 2025. Um, if you decide that you, uh, want to pursue opting out, um, it doesn't prohibit you in later years from deciding that you do want to, uh, implement a floating homestead exemption. At that point in time, the way that that would work is you would actually file, uh, local legislation with the General Assembly and create a bill so you have a local floating homestead exemption. It wouldn't be like, you can't really opt into it later on in the same way that you can't opt out of it later on. But you can always have that ability to then create the legislation to match that floating homestead exemption. So our decision to opt out is, or opt in, is independent of anybody else. Um, and we are not, uh, bound by what Brookhaven does or Doraville does or whatever any other nearby municipality does. Um, it is entirely our decision on if we want to opt in or opt out, um, which is different from the, the new tax, the new, um, sales tax, uh, provision of the code. So, uh, like I said, the option to opt out versus opt in, uh, that, uh, does not, um, I mean, if opting out is, this is your opportunity to opt out in the next year. If you would like to opt out, you have the ability to file local legislation later on if you would like to opt in. Um, so a, a similar homestead exemption can always be done through the traditional process. As you know, we already have existing homestead exemptions. Um, so some policy considerations on that. Um, so even if a local government decides to opt out of HB 581, um, the floating, uh, nothing precludes your local delegation from creating that, uh, legislation in the General Assembly. Um, and if we decide to opt out, it may be best practice to really articulate the why to our residents and our taxpayers. So, uh, like I said, many existing, uh, communities have, I mean, many communities have existing floating homestead exemptions in the form of tax freezes. Um, and then these typically apply only to MNO millage rates. Um, they don't typically apply to things like an SSD, which as you know, since we've created our SSDs, we've had to put those provisions in our resolution that exempt those taxpayers from that. Um, this would, this is different. Um, so this would apply to your SSDs, um, if you were to opt into it. Um, and it would be automatic. You, it wouldn't be part of the, the resolution. It would just be an automatic exemption. And this is, uh, like I said, because it only applies to homesteaded properties, it wouldn't apply to commercial properties. So you might see some SSDs in some other communities that only, uh, tax commercial properties. So their, um, decision to opt in or out, that does not impact their SSD if it only has commercial properties in their SSD. So it's a little bit of a confusing bill and the impact is still not necessarily, uh, very clear from a financial standpoint, um, but wanted to walk you through the process, walk you through a few different policy considerations, um, uh, and just kind of give you some information ahead of time. GMA has done a really great job collecting and providing information to the municipalities, trying to make sense of what the bill says. Um, there's a lot of procedural tax changes in the code, uh, or in the bill as well. And also, there's a, a special purpose local option sales tax that is included, uh, or it's not a special, it's a floating local option sales tax that is included in the code as well. Um, I'm not going to ta, touch on that because, um, in, in much detail tonight because essentially, uh, it's probably not going to be an option for us to consider. Um, all cities would have to, uh, opt in. We would have, it would follow the process of a splotch. You would have to have a memorandum of understanding or an IGA with the counties and the cities, all in agreement of what that, uh, allocation and formula would be. Um, and the county would have to opt out, uh, or opt into the floating homestead exemption as well for them to be able to choose the, the, um, floating local option sales tax. So that is, uh, probably not as well articulated as I would prefer, uh, with this subject, but, um, wanted to start the conversation, um, get some thoughts on, uh, what you guys are feeling on this, um, so that we know at the beginning of the year what direction you would like to head in. Obviously, you don't have to make a decision tonight, but wanted to go ahead and put the information out there, um, and have the conversation this evening.
I would like the people that wrote this bill to come in here and explain it because it, this, this is the most complicated and convoluted thing I've dealt with in a long, long time.
Yeah.
To add to that, I would like to see one of them try.
I, I mean, I will tell you, I mean, even, even, um, just getting in a room with people trying to determine what the impact has been with the Georgia Municipal Association and the other decap cities, nobody really knows. And it's trying to siphon through, um, the bill and, and how, like what the, the, the long-term effects are and, and who it would impact and how it would impact them. It's very complicated. It's a very complicated bill.
And, and we're the only county in Georgia that doesn't collect sales tax. So that impacts everything as well. But is what, I don't think I'm translating this correctly, but what I thought I heard was that there would be an actual percentage, uh, of, uh, value, uh, going up on, on your home every year and it would be capped.
Essentially, that's what it's doing. It's capping it by the rate of inflation.
Yeah.
And so, and then the state has not specifically told us what the mechanism is to determine that because that would, again, be, be determined by the state, not by the, the tax assessor's office.
So, so, yeah. That sounds like taking a lot of power away from somebody who's not going to be real happy about it, the tax assessor. That, I, that...
Yes and no, I think. Um, I think the, anyone opting into this is guaranteeing that their property tax in their city is going to be guaranteed to go up every single year.
Yeah.
I remember my property tax bills after the 08 recession, we had a few years where my property taxes dropped a lot because the state required that the properties be reassessed every three years and do spot checks in certain cases.
Yeah.
So I, I think the, the laws of unintended consequences with this are, are rich and deep and no one's really thought it through.
Yeah.
But, but I think it guarantees that no matter what, unless, you know, the economy collapses and we go into deflation, everyone's property taxes are going to go up every year, no matter what else is happening.
I would add, there is a mechanism already for people to freeze their home assessment values right now, even without this. So they feel, I feel that this isn't necessary in that particular manner.
Also, something is buried in this bill, if I remember reading through this correctly. Municipalities that opt into this, that freeze option goes away when you make your appeal. Right now, you, if you repeal your taxes, even if you lose your appeal, you get a three-year freeze. This bill, I believe, gets rid of that.
I think...
So that option goes off the table as well.
Right. And if you have an existing freeze, um, as it says further back, um, I believe in one of these slides, um, it, it'll take basically the most advantageous option for the property owner, um, whether it's your freeze or, and so it could, for, for some cities that might have the freeze, it might end up, you know, being kind of a wash. Um, but we, obviously, we don't have a freeze in, in, in Shambly. So, um, that's why we do have the, you know, pretty, uh, significant homestead exemptions that we have here already.
I have talked to some of our neighbors and Brookhaven's not affected by this because they have a freeze already. And, uh, same thing with Dunwoody. Uh, Doraville is looking at this heavily, so they don't have the same considerations we do. I would say that if we can't get this explained to us and we have, don't have all the information, we talked about this last council meeting. We didn't have all the, the information for annexation, so we decided to table this. If we don't have the information by the time we have to make the decision, I can't in good conscience move forward with this.
And, and even going beyond that, I, with all of the, what I think are potholes and landmines in this, I wouldn't mind sitting back for a few years just to see how it actually shakes out for the cities that opt in. I mean, again, the, the, the state legislature is great at writing bills that they don't know what's going to happen. They, they came up with the voucher thing for private schools and the, they're on the third revision, sorry, second revision of the data. There, I think the bill limited to 25,000 vouchers and they believe there's over 400,000 kids in Georgia who would be eligible to apply. The response out of the legislature was, oh, we, we didn't think it was that big of a problem. I, I have a feeling that we're going to have similar gee whiz moments with this, that, uh, and I think there's, I think there's other issues going along with it. I think it's going to discourage people from selling their houses and sitting around going, well, okay, I'd like to move, but well, I don't know if I really want to have my property tax jump because when you do sell or buy a house, it's going to reset. So you're going to see property value assessments jump by very, very large numbers when a house does hit the market. So I, I, I don't know. I'm, I'm skeptical and I'm really not sure what problem this is supposed to fix.
At, at the end of the day, this is a front to home rule, in my opinion. And we like, I like to be able to make our decisions for our citizens and have the, the state make those decisions. Even though this went through a constitutional amendment, was voted on, it still feels to me as a front to home rule.
Well, and what you said, Elmer, who is this designed to protect? I don't, I, I...
I, I understand the concept. I understand that property tax increases do hurt some parts of the population more than others. I just, I, you know, I, it's, it's, I think it's a little unfair in how it works. Uh, I, I think it, it, but I just, I, I think that there's holes in the plan. Basically, I think what this comes down to is, what this bill is written for is to say, okay, cities, if you need more tax, property tax money, then you have to sit, you have to go out and raise your millage rate and you're elected to have to, you know...
Yeah.
Um, it, it's an odd way of doing it. I, I don't know. I, I'm not buying it.
And I'll, I'll add that I have heard that from other municipalities that, and, and we're not in the same position necessarily as, as some of these other municipalities where they have a heavier residential, um, population, that this would end up obviously ultimately really hurting their commercial. Um, and that probably could have detrimental consequences in terms of economic development. But it would force them on that other end to, to increase their millage rate, just given the, the, uh, the demographics of their, of their, um, the community with being residential versus commercial.
And the point clearly for me, you did say that this would be in addition to our, our exemptions that we have today.
I believe that's correct.
Correct?
I thought it was whatever was better.
No, that's for the, if you have a freeze.
The freeze, okay.
The freeze, which we already have, as you mentioned, three different tax exemptions on the books.
Yeah.
So this feels...
Essentially...
I know this would impact our...
Right. My understanding is with a freeze, because those are typically included in your, um, your charter, um, or they've been created through a legislative act. Um, the freeze, because it's a, a state, um, a General Assembly Act, um, that, that would be, it would be either or, whereas this would be, you know, our local legislation contemplated our local, um, homestead exemptions. And so this would be a state homestead exemption on a top of our local homestead exemptions. That is my interpretation of it.
And I like what Elmer said there. I had a boss years ago tell me that we would like to be conscientious observers and let other people be the canaries in the coal mine. And we have opportunity to do this if we opt out and we could always opt back in.
So you can always create, um, local legislation and move forward with either a freeze or, um, a floating homestead exemption.
All right. Anything else on this particular subject? All right. Let's move on down to the Raze Grant Program discussion.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So, um, wanted to have a brief discussion this evening about the Raze Grant Program, which is, let me get my government, uh, acronym list out. It's Rebuilding American Infrastructure with Sustainable Equity, or Raze, um, Grant Program, which is a federal USDOT program, um, that, uh, Senator Ossoff's office has announced funding for, for FY 2025. Um, so there is an open call for projects to submit for this grant opportunity. Um, we have several projects, of course, as you know, that we are trying to move forward with, uh, multiple grant projects that, or I'm sorry, multiple trail projects, um, that we are looking to, um, fully fund, um, over the next several years. Um, and so, uh, the reason I wanted to have this discussion tonight is to get a sense of your appetite to move forward with, uh, applying for this grant, talking about the project that we, the projects that we are going to consider, or we would like to consider in an application, if you would like to move forward with an application. As you know, with any project that is, has federal funds introduced to it, it's not, um, it's not free money. Uh, it does cost. And so, um, and with the Raze Grant for an urban... And so, and with the RACE Grant for an urban area such as Shambly, there is not 100% funding available. It is probably at the best 80%. So obviously, there would be a 20% requirement. More competitive projects require that, basically, that you offer more money to fund the project. So our approach is to consider making it a multi-project application with the approximately $20 million in construction funds as a request. The projects that we are considering or we would like to consider in this application are the West Nancy Creek Trail Project. So as you know, we're, we're looking at, and we'll talk about this a little bit more when we talk about the budget for next year, but we're, we're working to get easements on that project so that we can start the design engineering and then ultimately the construction of that trail and that model mile on our path, a master plan trail, a master trail plan. Rail Trail 7 through 12, obviously, that's been going on for several years. We do have funding through the ARC and Georgia Department of Transportation, through the TIP program. That one, because of the right-of-way and the kind of extensive comp, the complexity of where that, that trail network is going, as you know, it is a lot more expensive than what we have available funding for. So we would like to request some supplemental funding to complete those, those trail segments and complete that or get as close to completing that rail trail network downtown as possible. The other one is the Shambly Tucker Multi-Use Path. So we did a scoping and a concept study with TIP funding a couple of years ago for this trail along Shambly Tucker Road. And we were not awarded or recommended funding for this next round of TIP for construction, for design and then to construction. And so we would like to, if we want to move that project forward, it's about four to, four and a half million dollar project. We would like to, of course, pursue some other funding mechanisms for it. And then the last piece of that was the Peachtree Creek Greenway Dresden East Connector. That would be the first connecting point to the Peachtree Creek Greenway. As you know, we have not moved forward with plans to build that yet. It is in, all of these projects are in our five to six-year SPOLOST plan in some way. Some of them are funded, some of them are not. They're either tier one or tier two projects. But, and, and, you know, of course, a couple of them have been from previous SPOLOST as well. But we, we, we thought that this would be the best, most competitive approach is to couple or group several projects together in an application. The application is due January 30th, 2025. And so if you guys are interested and want to discuss this tonight and are ultimately interested in moving forward, we would move this to an action item for Tuesday and ask that you approve funding for us to have Kimley Horn complete an application. The cost of that is pretty steep. It's $45,000, but it's because it's a pretty substantial application process and it's a short period of time to turn it around.
Yeah, break some eggs, make omelet. I'm, I'm 100% behind moving forward on the action item on Tuesday. As you know, we, we're, we're looking for funding for all of our trails. We know how important our trail system is for the city of Shambly and for our residents and for this council. So I'm fully supportive in moving this forward as, for action item on Tuesday.
One thing I do want to mention, of course, as you know, anytime you introduce federal funds, it will slow everything down. So I do just want to put that out there. I know that has come up on several other projects in the past. We, you know, government can be slow in and of itself. You add the federal government to the mix or the state government to the mix, you've got, you know, kind of that recipe for a very, very slow process. But at the same time, you're, you're looking long-term. And so, you know, if you want to keep these projects moving as you're really moving quickly on some other projects, this could be a really great funding opportunity.
I would also say that this helps us extend the potential funds from the parks bond.
Yeah.
You know, we, we, we know how big our project list is. I think what we're talking about $100 million all in between trails and parks right now. So anything we can do, 30 million in bonds. This gets us a little further down that road.
So we have, how far along are each of these four in planning? I think some of them are a lot farther along with the construction drawings and stuff like that.
So Rail Trail 7 through 12 is, I believe, the only one on the list that actually has construction documents ready to go.
Yeah.
Or not construction documents, I'm sorry, a design and process because that is going through the TIP process right now. This would be supplemental funding to that. The other ones don't have any construction or design plans ready to go at this point in time. They've... It, it doesn't have design. It was concept. That's what TIP funded it. It was, it's, it's concept. So it, it's very ready to go, to pick up and start designing. The other ones don't, I've already given the thumbs up to move forward with designing and engineering, the Nancy Creek Trail. And so, and that was done before we even contemplated pursuing this grant. But I will note that none of our, our design and engineering would be covered. This would be solely for the construction costs.
I know. And so each one of these to come up with construction drawings, that's, what would that cost, like six million bucks?
No. No, for the, for the design and engineering, I mean, obviously, it's going to be different for each of these different projects.
Yeah.
We've already, I don't have those numbers off the top of my head. They're already, for the most part, already budgeted in our five-year CIP. But it, it wouldn't be close to a million on any of them.
Well, I thought when we were discussing, discussing the Nancy, I mean, I'm sorry, Peachtree Creek Greenway, that the construction drawings, well, concept and construction drawings for that was going to cost us a million too.
This, this isn't the actual PCG through Century Center.
Oh, okay.
This is the piece that can, that runs through the neighborhoods, getting us over there.
Okay, all right.
So this is a whole, this is, that's actually part of, with the Wood Acres property being the anchor point for some of that. This, this is the trail project that runs through that area.
So we're pretty far along with acquiring the property.
Well, we have one, the, the land acquisition is going to be expensive to own, but I would say West Nancy Creek, we've, you know, we've already, it sounds like we're already moving on the, on that rail trail. We're far enough down the road. The Shambly Tucker one is a pretty, quite literally straightforward path.
Oh, yeah.
That's, that's why I was confused. The, the concept work is not far off of being 80%.
It's not a complicated, it's not a complicated design and engineer.
So...
Well, I'm certainly in favor of pushing to get this, these done because we've been talking about them for a long time. But I, but, and, and I wanted to know if, I mean, what if we don't get the grants and we spend X amount of money? But if it's, if it's not six million bucks, that's totally different.
Right. And I would add with pursuing the grants, it doesn't prohibit you from moving, or obviously, we can pause at any point. We, we're not fully underway on all of these. We tried to pick projects that were going to be just cost prohibitive and challenging from a, a, a long-term standpoint, so ones that would take a little bit longer to do anyway. Whereas, you know, for example, we've got this Savoy property and that trail network, that's a, a great one to keep in the Parks Bond plan if we want to pursue that as part of the Parks Bond because it is a, it is a turn, keep project essentially once it's fully designed. It's, it's not going to require a lot of complexity to it.
One of the things I look for in my professional life is asymmetrical gains and investing $45,000 or a $20 million payout, is what I call asymmetrical. So I'm, again, fully, fully in support of this.
Okay.
I'm in favor too.
All right. Well, if that's the case, we will move forward with making this a staff action item on Tuesday and ask you guys to approve, as to go ahead and move forward with the application and approve the task order with Kimley Horn.
Fantastic. Any more discussion on this item? All right, this brings us to staff action items. And first up, I'm very excited for this one, Assistant City Manager Appointment.
Mr. Mayor Protem would like to, would like to make a motion to appoint Vivian Vakili to the position of Assistant City Manager.
I have a motion to second. Any discussion on this item? Nope. All in favor? And that passes. Congratulations, welcome champion. All right, the second item we have today is Chang versus the City of Milton Multi-City Amicus Resolution.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So bear with me, this is another legal, heavily legal situation. So I'm going to try to summarize what our city attorney has put to you guys as best as I can. But essentially what this, this item is, it's, and, and again, you guys will need to take action if you would like to consider moving forward with this resolution, take action this evening so that we can submit the information back to the appropriate parties tomorrow by their deadline. But this, the, and amicus brief is a brief that is actually filed by groups or parties that are actually not specifically party to that litigation itself, but might be substantially impacted or impacted in some way by that litigation. So the city has been asked to join a multi-city brief for, in support of an appeal to the Georgia Supreme Court for this case of Chang versus the City of Milton. And so this case arises out of a 2016 car accident where unfortunately, a college student was killed after his car left the road and collided with a concrete planter in the shoulder of the roadway. The parents then, of course, sued the City of Milton and asserted that the city breached its duty to keep the roadways and the city free of defects. And the jury found in favor of the parents and returned a verdict of $35 million against the City of Milton. The city appealed the verdict to the Court of Appeals, which affirmed the verdict and held up that the shoulder where the planter was located in the road, within the meaning of Georgia law, and that the city was aware of the planter's existence, even though the, the planter, essentially in this case, the planter actually existed before the City of Milton even became a city. And even if the city knew about it, they didn't, they didn't remove it. It was in the right-of-way. And so, and that because the city was aware of the planter's existence before the accident, the city had breached its duty to maintain the roadway in a safe condition. So thereby, their sovereign immunity is then waived. And so the Court of Appeals is holding, the Court of Appeals holding on this is significant because it exposes Georgia municipalities to expansive and potentially devastating financial consequences. $35 million in a city the size of Milton is, is, is a huge amount of money. I think it's probably the size of their annual budget, if not close. And so essentially what this brief is doing is, is showing support for basically the long, or it's not showing support, but it's, it's, it's providing an understanding of the long-term consequences to the Georgia Supreme Court of how cities will be impacted by this and the potentially negative consequences. So the consideration for you guys tonight is to join this amicus brief and, and approve a resolution that we could then file. There are several cities that have passed similar resolutions, just understanding the implication that it might have on municipalities. And I did want to note that this is a situation which the, if, if the ruling is upheld, it would make it really challenging. The city does not currently have the ability to grant variances to put structures in the right-of-way, but there are obviously many structures in the right-of-way. And so, you know, if we were to ever say we do want to allow structures in the right-of-way or for whatever reason, this would actually put us in a situation where we would be liable for every single one of those decisions. And so that would set that precedent.
If I can jump in, because I'm the person that sits and reads the whole thing, it isn't about, the concern is not about if a, having the situation where allowing residents to build things in the right-of-way. The issue is any object in the right-of-way that could possibly be an obstacle.
Correct.
Like telephone poles, fire hydrants. So theoretically, if Chang were to stand, in order to protect themselves, all cities would need to move everything out of the right, well, where do we move all the things out of the right-of-way that are designed to be in the right-of-way for the public use? I mean, it's, it, it, it's a Schrodinger's kind of problem here. It's you, it's there for the public good, but now we can't put anything for the public good there because it could be a problem.
Think about power lines in general, right? We have to bury them all. What is it, a mile, $2 million, $5 million?
We don't know because they won't tell us until after it's done.
It's millions of dollars per mile.
It's, to start.
And we have lots of miles of power line here in Shambly.
But, but, I mean, you know, access hatches for sewers, uh...
Electric boxes?
Every single thing.
Yeah, there, there were some...
Yeah, trees, thank you, trees, signs, you, you name it.
Yeah, there were some, some examples that were thrown out of court where guy ran his bicycle and he got his tire stuck in the grate on the storm drain, sued, he did not win. There was multiple applications of this law. This, this case Chang flips case law on its head.
Yeah.
And I fully support joining the amicus brief.
Oh, yeah.
To indemnify the city from what this case law would represent.
That being the case, and I would like to make a motion that we adopt the Multi-City Amicus Brief Resolution as presented by staff.
Second.
I have a motion to second. Any discussion on this item? All in favor? And that passes unanimously. All right, that brings us down to the Dresden Plaster Special Services District Resolution.
So, thank you, Mayor Protem. So this was discussed at last month's city council meeting. As a discussion item, this would be the creation of a Dresden Plaster Special Services District. I believe there's a map. And so this is the area that we discussed. This mirrors the small, for the most part, mirrors the small area plan that was done by Planning and Development as, as Mr. Max Muck presented last month. And essentially, this grants you the ability to levy a special service tax on this area, which is what this resolution would allow us to do next year or whenever you see fit, to move forward with implementing some of those small area plan work program projects and programs. And so wanted to put this back in front of you guys this evening for your consideration on Tuesday.
Any discussion? Yeah, we talked about it last month, so I feel, I felt comfortable moving forward. To Master Plan Design Services City Hall South Lawn.
Yes, so we've had a lot of discussion, especially with the streetscape underway and the city, city, city center project moving forward of what we want to do with this lovely space to the right here of City Hall. So just outside this window that I'm looking at. It's the area that encompasses the old City Hall parking lot as well as what will be some demolished buildings just along Broad Street that the city purchased earlier this year and last year. So we are asking for approval to move forward with a master plan of this site through, with, in partnership with GMC, who is also doing the design of the, the streetscape and also did our concept update for the city center, as well as our beautiful city hall. This would, this cost would be $26,500 that we would use the downtown special services district to cover the cost. It's a 10-week timeline where they would kind of go through a design process similar to what we did with our concept development and create a master plan with some renderings and some budget associated. As you know, the, the buildings that are coming down here in the next couple of weeks, we currently have a plan to landscape and create a path as a temporary measure to beautify the area as the streetscape is completed and we expand some of that public space around City Hall for our events. But this would kind of contemplate long-term opportunities and use of this area.
Is the expectation that we will include some buildings?
I think that would be something that you guys could talk about with the master plan. I think the way that, as you recall, when we purchased, not the, the long skinny white building out here, but the ones next to it, we did do that with a taxable bond. So that means that you can sell that property for non-governmental purposes because it is not tax exempt. And so it does contemplate if, if you were to move forward, say, for example, with the partners that we would work with at the city center, you do have property available. If you wanted to consider buildings that were non-public use, you could also consider public use facilities on that property. So yes, that, that would be contemplated through this process.
Okay.
Any other discussion on this item? All right, moving on down to Third Amendment to the HDL Master Service Agreement.
Yes, this is a Third Amendment to the HDL Master Services Agreement. We currently have an existing contract with HDL to provide business licensing services. We have slowly reduced their scope of work over the last couple of years to start bringing most of their services in-house. We've done that successfully with our alcohol and massage permits, but still are using them for business licensing. We need to extend the contract next year until we move forward with a long-term system to be able to process the business licenses. And just for some context, obviously, business licenses are much higher volume than our privileged licenses, so we do need to have a system in place. Our finance team is working diligently to come up with a good system that is effective and cost, cost-effective as well. But for this upcoming renewal cycle, which will start in January, we do want to continue to work with HDL. This also eliminates a discovery portion of their contract, which has never been utilized, so that just takes that out of it as well.
Any discussion on this item?
It's pretty necessary.
Moving on to...
Let me put my microphone on there. Moving on to the fiscal year 2025 budget resolution.
Yes, thank you. This is the exciting time of year where we review and approve potentially our 2025 fiscal year 2025 budget. So just, I'll keep it high level. You'll see a summary of all of our funds on your screens. So this includes our general fund, our special revenues funds and our enterprise fund. So this would cover the actual total budget that we have, which will be roughly $68 million in 2025. So that is... So that is all funds, including our sanitation, stormwater, so enterprise, all of the various special revenue funds that we have, and of course, our general operating budget, which has a proposed expenditure total and balanced revenue total of 35.992731 million dollars this year. Sorry, I didn't say that correctly, but 35 million dollars roughly, 36 million dollars So just wanted to highlight some, some changes to, or significant items in the 2025 general fund. So again, this is our general operating budget. This budget does contemplate a 3% cost of living adjustment for all city employees, as well as our increased market rate and healthcare costs and benefit coverage. That's roughly 8%, give or take, this year. There is a one-time cost to update the Unified Development Ordinance, so the UDO, that is about $500,000. This was an item that was actually budgeted this year, but we did not move forward with the project in 2024, so we are moving it to 2025. It also contemplates an investment in renewable, renewable energy infrastructure and city facilities. So this was actually taken as part of our sustainability roadmap that we approved a couple of months ago. This is one of the initial investment projects that they had recommended to us. So that will be included in, in this operating budget for this year. It also creates a new payroll and benefits specialist position. As you know, the city has not miraculously, has not had a payroll person, a fully dedicated payroll person on staff at this point in time. With the complexity of our operations and the size of our staff, we feel like it is appropriate and a best use of resources to hire that position and get them on board. And then again, as I mentioned, we did purchase some properties and then have also issued an additional bank loan to move forward with Fishbowl Park and purchase a, and renovate, subsequently renovate a public works facility. So a good chunk, not a good chunk, but you do see a, a good increase to your debt service in 2025. I believe it's roughly 11 to 12% of that other financing, which also encompasses some transfers, but it is, a lot of it is centered around that increase in debt service. We continue to invest in police equipment and training. We are almost fully staffed. I believe the chief was here at some point. I think he's stepped out, but we are almost fully staffed in our police department, which was a huge win for the city. And, and we are moving quickly through getting them fully trained and implementing some new programs in the police department, including a real-time crime center, which is also contemplated in this budget. So that would be the construction of the real-time crime center, and you'll see in the special revenue funds, where you'll, where you'll have in the, a multiple grant fund, an allocation from the governor's office through ARPA for the actual real-time crime center cameras and equipment. But the, the grant itself does not cover the construction of the space, and that space will be that shelled-out space in the police department. So that is roughly 500,550, which the contract for the, if you guys decide to move forward with this in the budget this year, that contract will be in front of you in early January, so we can get started on that. And then, of course, you have your, your typical operating and increases. We have several new facilities, so of course, the maintenance and operations of those facilities are, the cost is increasing, and we are experiencing inflation just like everybody else. And so, that is the summary for the general fund. I'll pause if there's any questions on that. If not, I'll move forward into the other funds. So here you can see a summary of it broken down by each department. Again, it's 35,992,731. That is a balanced budget. It's an 8% increase over the previous year. We are not contemplating using any reserves in this budget. And we tried to be pretty conservative. Now, of course, a legislation that might potentially impact this in terms of the floating homestead exemption, if it does apply, it would freeze this year, so, in 2025. This is a breakdown by department, of course. Our law enforcement, police department makes up the majority of our operating budget at 39%, with public works and city administration closely behind it. And then this is our special revenue summary. We have several special revenue funds. Some of them are created by you guys. Some of them are legislated by the state, and the uses are defined within each of those funds. And so that's why they are considered special revenue funds, because they have specific uses that they are designed to capture. So, again, you'll see that's a 25.6 million dollar total from all funds within that special revenue category, the biggest, of course, being that one point, that 1 million dollar grant for the real-time crime center equipment, as I mentioned earlier. And you do have some fund balance with SPOLO, so we are planning to, to roll that into 2025 and spend some of that on several of our, our larger projects next year. So again, significant items out of that. As you know, we have began practicing, the practice of allocating 10% of our hotel motel fund, which can only be used for tourism and, and marketing, tourism development, for our public art projects. So that is roughly 170,000 for this year, which would be 10% of our projected revenue for 2025. The real-time crime center grant, as I mentioned, and then as well as construction of Dresden Park, as you know, that is the ARPA-funded project, but we did allocate about 3 million dollars out of our SPOLOs fund to cover the, the cost of the community room building on that site. Again, the SPOLOs projects that we will begin in 2025 include the, the two Dresden Trail projects, so that's going from Shallowford Road to Dresden, and then from Beaufort Highway to Dresden Park. We'll continue the Broad Street Streetscape Project, as well as the Shambly Dunn-Witty Road Diet, which we've discussed, about 6 million dollar project for that road diet with the two roundabouts. And then, of course, as you know, with our SPOLOs, we did have legislation last year that changed our ability to use SPOLOs, so we now have a standard, a standing allocation for police vehicles and equipment, about six police vehicles and associated equipment included in that. And then the Nancy Creek Trail West segment, this is again, not for the design or engineering. This is actually just for moving forward with the purchase of an easement to get that process started and with the potential of getting grant funds or for future SPOLOs dollars to build that, that project out. Next, we'll move on to special, or I'm sorry, enterprise funds. Our enterprise funds are comprised of our stormwater utility fund and our solid waste fund. That is about 6 and 1/2 million dollars. Of course, solid waste is subsidized by the general fund, so there is an allocation of general fund dollars that is transferred into solid waste to cover that operating cost and can go up or down depending on the equipment. That, that, that fund has increased primarily due to employee cost increases, but there is some equipment contemplated in that budget this year. Stormwater as well, there is a, a portion of that debt service I mentioned earlier that will come out of the stormwater fund. There are salary increases, as well as costs associated with infrastructure projects, replacing and fixing major stormwater infrastructure projects throughout the year as emergencies happen or planned infrastructure changes happen. And that's that.
Thank you, Ms. Gorm. Any questions or comments?
Do you want us to move on to this tonight?
No, you don't have to do that.
I just have one comment. I want to thank everybody out there, Daria, Director Finance, all the directors, actually, because they, I don't think that people actually realize what a Herculean effort is to put this budget together, roughly 60 million dollars. It's about a month and a half process, and so, thank you. And Kristen, thank you as well for spearheading.
Wish it was a month and a half.
Yeah, yeah. This was a tough budget. Revenues are slowing down, and there had to be some tough decisions to keep our service level going for our residents that they've come to expect, and also make our, our departments happy as well. So it was a challenge, but we got there. So again, thank you. And that will move us down to the resolutions established the 2025 fee schedule.
Thank you. We, every year, this time of year, we do have to adopt the annual fee schedule, as well as the budget. So no significant changes to the fee schedule this year. I believe there are two changes, Sean. Can you clarify which two were changed in this one? Is it, there's a public works update?
Public works fees for employees working special events.
Yep, that's correct.
And I can't remember the other one.
I think, I think that that was the, the one. I apologize, I don't have it in my notes in front of me. But we did withhold making significant changes. We do want to contemplate looking at our planning and development fees for 2025. Earlier next year, we just did not want to move forward with it until we go through our exercise with Matrix Consulting and have them look at our fees in addition to our processes, so.
Any discussion? All right. That moves us down to the Vannett Road Traffic Calming Petition. I don't know if I said that right. Vanette, Vanette, excuse me.
I think it's Vannett.
Vannett, Vanette.
It's Vannett. We, we do have a resident.
Are we in Paris? Does that change how you say it?
Vannett, Vannett, we're in Georgia. So we've had some, some, some residents of Vannett Road who have followed the traffic calming petition process, which is a, a policy that we have that allows residents to petition for traffic calming measures to the city for our consideration. Usually, it's typically more of an infrastructure investment process. In this case, residents of Vannett Road are asking the city to consider some traffic calming by way of parking signage. So right now, on Vannett Road, during the school year, we have several students from Shambly High School that park along that road, which has kind of created some challenges for the residents along Vannett, which is why they've petitioned the city. There are some other challenges associated with that that are not just blocking of the actual homes along the road, but also some concerns from emergency vehicle standpoint, and also services like Relief and Limb. When that road is very congested, it's very hard for vehicles to access that residential roadway. And so, we have worked with the residents on Vannett. We do have a resident, Mr. Farnell is here. And we have come up with a recommendation to install no stopping, standing, or parking. There are parking signage, there is currently existing parking signage on various parts of, of this road existing, but this would be continuing those signage, that signage along Vannett between Sandalwood and Teal. And it would be, the recommendation that we have is to actually change the time and the hours of that for, right now, it's no stopping, standing, or parking on school days between, I believe it's, it's in the afternoon between 3:15 and 4:30 or something like that, the end of the school day. I don't have the specifics off the top of my head, but what we are recommending is changing that time to, to be from 7:00 AM to 4:30 PM on school days specifically. So not in the evenings, not on the weekends, but during school days, so that during really business hours, it doesn't get heavily congested. People can receive services during that time, and ultimately, it doesn't get too congested in that roadway. So that will be approximately 900 for us to, to add the additional signage and swap out the time. Staff is recommending that we move forward with their request.
Any discussion on this item?
A couple of things. So, looking at the hours, my only concern, I don't know, I didn't catch that before, do we have a concern of either residents who haven't left for work yet, who maybe had to park on the street for some reason, getting pinched? Is there, and is there any sort of mechanics in there to allow for things like pest service or house cleaning services who may have to park on the street? Or even contractor painters, things like that, to not be wrapped up if they're there for 30 minutes or an hour?
Yeah, I mean, so because it's, and I will preface this by saying, we did have this conversation with the resident petitioners, because it does, it does create some limitations there. And, you know, we obviously can't contemplate every situation that comes through. It, it does not specifically, I, I think there is a level of discretion that we would use when implementing this. Obviously, you have a glaring vehicle that's been there for a while, and you drive by, it's, it's probably going to be, in addition to the police department being able to drive by and enforce this, there will be some element of code enforcement that probably will have to monitor this. But I would, I would recommend that we use a little bit of discretion with it. Obviously, we can't make exceptions for everybody, the law is the law. But I, I don't know that our folks would necessarily target or pinpoint, you know, a vehicle that looks, you know, like they're just providing a quick service, but.
I just hate vagueness.
I know, I understand.
It's, it's, it's the challenge. It's, you know, if you're making a black and white rule, then it needs to be enforced, black and white.
Mm-hmm.
If discretion leads to confusion.
I know.
Leads to anger.
And, and I will say, if we have to enforce it, we will have to enforce it, right?
To be, to be fair to the residents, they did get the amount of signatures they needed to move forward.
Right.
So they know the implications of this, and they're, they're willing to live with it.
Right.
It, it seems to have worked on, in, in Huntley Hills, on Green.
Green Hill.
Green Hill.
Green Acres.
Green Hill.
Green Hill.
On Green Hill Drive. And it does not seem to have obstructed any of the lawn care crews and, and things like that. So I, I don't, I, I know that there are some problems that can happen.
Yeah.
However, it just doesn't seem to have made a.
I would, I would also add that if you have lawn care crews and, and whoever is coming in to provide, I mean, the same, the same rule applies to them, to your point, but at the same time, if they're stopping in the roadway, they are obstruct, obstructing traffic, and we don't, we want to, you know, prohibit that as much as we can, because there is an issue there.
Yeah, yeah, but the driveways are not, in those homes, are not long enough for a truck and a trailer. So that, that is a little bit of an issue. And I, I think that if, let's say, landscape or, or whoever, let's not even talk about Federal Express, et cetera, but if there's that sort of a thing, it's, if there's not, if not every parking place along the street is inhabited or parked, then they're not, it's not that big of a problem. If there's a landscaping truck or, you know, somebody pulling a trailer or something like that, it just isn't that big of a problem.
And I will say, there's a little bit of a complexity with the reason why we proposed what we did, was because we didn't want to create an alternative issue, which is everybody flipping their cars and parking on the other side of the road and blocking, like actually blocking driveways. So it's, it's definitely a challenging situation. There was not a very good, clear solution to kind of avoid this situation because of the way that the road is and kind of where it connects. There is a lot of activity along that roadway. So there, there, there are going to be some, some tough situations that, you know, might impact some folks if we, if we do decide to move forward with that.
Yeah, we'll have a Christmas gift for all these students when they get back from holiday break.
And on that note, we do have to, to do quite a bit of education and informing, I know our police chief has been working with the school, has notified them that this might be coming. And I know that the residents have been in conversations with the high school to try to come up with some different ideas to kind of dissuade them from parking along that roadway. It hasn't really worked out. And of course, you know, the, the high school does have a, a serious parking challenge. I don't, full disclosure, you know, I, I don't know that this is necessarily going to solve that for the, for the, the residents of Sexton Woods, but it, it certainly will help diffuse a, a very congested roadway issue.
I, I predict that we'll have another sign petition for no parking come in front of us in the next year, once, it's like water, those.
And I will say, we do have officers out there towards Teal that are already enforcing the existing signage, because you've got drop-off from the middle school happening as well. Doesn't seem to be as much of an issue, but it is that longer, full-day parking. I know when students leave campus, they might go off-site, come back, and there's no parking on, on campus, and they need to park on the residential roadway. So it ends up being kind of a middle-of-the-day issue.
County needs to build a parking deck.
Yeah. So.
Absolutely. Any more discussion on this before we move on? And that brings us back to the Shambly Racket and Pavel Complex. Are there any questions or comments?
I have a lot of questions. Unfortunately, I could not read the plan that was sent because it got blurry when I tried to blow it up, so I'm really curious about some things. Oh, thank you. That's great. I still might not be able to read it because I can't blow this one up either, but I'll I like how this is laid out. I like it a lot. I like how the tennis courts are at an angle and how they can allow for the preservation of some of the, the trees and stuff like that. So I understand your concern about the sidewalks, but this is how we get sidewalks built in Shambly. And sometimes they are sidewalks to nowhere, but over time, they do get added to. It would be interesting to explore allowing for it to be built at a different, at a later date. However, that never does seem to work out, so there's no promise of that. So you're recommending denial of them using a ten, using chain link to surround their tennis courts?
That's correct. Well, staff finds that there are alternatives that can be, that can be explored, that are on the market.
And, and, and you've never heard of any? Okay. Like, what, netting and stuff like that?
Just different types of fencing.
I'm not against the chain link. Honestly, I'm not, especially with a black chain link, and it makes sense. I'm also a little bit concerned about totally hiding, if you will, the tennis courts from the sidewalk or from the street. I've. I'd rather have some sort of visibility. I mean, that's the whole point of putting buildings up on the street, is to have essentially eyes on the street and to have that sort of transparency, so that people walking along don't feel that there's, somebody's going to jump out and mug them and nobody's going to see it, and, and maybe come to their rescue. So, I am not at all sure that I want to see it totally blocked. I wouldn't mind some see-throughness, and probably at eye level of people that would be walking on the sidewalk. So, as it stands right now, you do not have any ADA accessibility to the sidewalk that come, that's a set of stairs that comes down perpendicular to Shallowford Road. So, there's not really any wheelchair accessibility down this sidewalk, is what...
No, because there's a, there's low property, 10 percent, so there's a 10 and 1/2 foot drop. So, a rampway would have to go back and forth, and there's not a lot of room there. Also, it's inordinately expensive, and, you know, where are the people that are going to use it coming from is, again, so we did not put that in the plan. Certainly, we could have the sidewalk continue down from the road, past the building, but our ADA accessibility is coming from the parking lot. There will be a crossroad there.
And where, what, where's, where are you putting in a retaining wall? Is that up at the street or at the...
Yes, because the property has to be tiered, which isn't easy, easy to see on the plan. It will drop down, there'll be a retaining wall, a flat surface, drop down, be a flat surface, and so each of those drops would require a retaining wall.
I have not really been able to suss that out from this drawing as either. I really do think that there needs to be some way to get ADA access. I understand that, that's a huge request, and I'm wondering if it, I mean, since you are providing access to Dynamo, if there's not some reciprocity with being able to create ADA access, even if it means going around their building or something, because they don't have the drop that you have. So, or tying into one of their sidewalks that has ADA accessibility. I, I really, I mean, it might make for a long journey, but I still think that it is pretty necessary.
Well, there is ADA access in the fact that if you take the entrance to Dynamo, go into the parking lot and access it, then, then you would be accessible to the racket facility.
Yeah.
So, that already, that would exist in this plan, it's just that it wouldn't be from, in front of the property from Shallowford Road proper.
Okay, yeah.
You would have to drive down.
I think that would be solvable with signage, though, as far as alerting people that there is access. I'm, you know, I, I know that this was proposed probably a couple of years ago, and I've been looking forward to it, I really am, and have been, so, thank you.
John, question, question for you on the left-hand churn. So, what's driving the decision to not have a left-hand churn there? I, I live in the area, I'm right around the corner, so I do know, it's a topography, a drop, there's a, it's on a hill, and it's also on a curve, so, but can you explain to me the reasoning behind it?
Yeah, I mean, I would say it's the, it's the nature of the street, excuse me, the nature of the street.
Can, can you elaborate on the nature of the street?
Well, I think it's, it's a multi-lane street, and you just want to control the traffic coming out of the facility, so there isn't as much crossover traffic.
I got a question for the applicant as well. So, during meet days at the swim club, there's cars parked on everywhere, absolutely everywhere, and I know we're adding parking, but what's your business model, and how are you going to ensure that you don't have overlapping congestion in the area? Thank you.
So, Mike Cotter and I have been working together to have a schedule, and when, the, the swim meets are about twice a month, and so on those days, we are going to have Dynamo days at our facility, so the people using our courts already are parked at his facility. There's going to be special promotions, and we're going to block out the courts so that regular customers aren't in attendance, and we also are working with the Paidaia School to bus some of his people in for the meets, so that they don't, especially the employees, so they are not taking up those really precious parking spaces.
And the last question I have for you is, I commend your letters or recommendation that you have received on there, but the one thing that was admitted from there was residents. There's no residents in that area, and I know there's mitigation that we're doing for sound that, in part of the plans. However, I would be remiss not to mention, just went down in Tucker this last month, where the residents came out and said, "No."
And Avondale Estates.
We don't have a lot, was that?
And Avondale Estates.
And Avondale Estates. I would, I feel much more comfortable if this project, if I had some letters from the residents saying, "We archive this, we're, we're, we want this pickleball court." I, I want this here, I'll tell you that right now. That property's been sitting there dormant forever, so anything that we put on there is great, and I know, I was excited for the, for the academy as well, unfortunately, what happened there. So, have you talked to the residents, have you reached out to anybody in the area outside of the people?
Yeah, so I have an online campaign in support of the project. There wasn't a real good, like, way to present it to you, because it's just a campaign online. There's 380 signatures on there, and it gives you the addresses. About a third of them live in the city of Chambley, and I can find a way to send you a link to that. The, that's another reason why I need to have the chain link fence that's 10 feet tall, because if you're going to put materials like acousta fence that mitigate sound, it has to be high enough to actually block the sound. And so, that will go up on the fences, and all of the statistics are in your report, it, it takes the decibel levels to less than 50 percent, and it is a wonderful covering, it is proven to be really effective. Plus, unlike Tucker and Avondale, my closest neighbor is 280 feet in the back, and there's a, like a ravine back there and a lot of vegetation, and on the side, that resident is closest to the tennis courts, they're not going to be near the pickleball courts. So, I feel like those couple of things will really help with the sound.
And to be, to be fair, I'm not interested in anybody outside of the city of Chambley's opinion on it, so, don't send that to me.
Sure. So, yeah, but you don't need to broadcast it. So, you, where on the fences are you putting the acousta fence?
On all of these, all of the 10-foot fences completely surrounding the facility.
Is that a temporary draw it up, draw it down, like a blind thing, or...
No, it's permanently affixed, it's usually affixed with just lashings, and so it can be taken down, but it is a permanent fixture that will...
So, even, even on the tennis courts up near the sidewalk, you're going to...
I think it would be nice for the neighbors to not hear any noise coming from the facility if possible, just respectfully for the neighbors.
So, does it matter if, if, if there's visibility or not, because the acousta fence is going to stop the visibility from the street?
The acousta fence is very similar to a windscreen, where it is a little bit opaque.
Okay.
And so, there's pictures in your packet of similar types of fencing. You can logo it if you want to make it look nice, or put artwork on it.
John, question for you. On the, on staff's recommendation to deny variances, one of them, sorry, here are my notes, variance, as I provided, fence is 50 percent transparent in the front yard. Is that due to the application of the acoustical material on that fence, or is that for another reason? And is that, as applying justice to the area at the front of the property?
Well, it is requirement in UDO under that section, and we just didn't, didn't find a reason...
I, I'm just asking, it's, but what you're referring to there is the, this acoustical material, not the fence, it's, not necessarily the fence itself. I just want to make sure I'm understanding the, the recommendation to deny on that.
The fence itself.
Okay. Because I would think that chain link is more than 50 percent transparent. My reading of this was that, because going through the stack, there was also, also for the other, there was a reference to material to block wind on the tennis court. So, my question was, is that something that's a requirement of USTA, or is that just a nice-to-have?
Oh, it's just nice-to-have. It, it, you either have to have the acousta fence or the windscreen. I think that it is more respectful of the neighbors to have the acousta fence, which will effectively act as the windscreen.
Okay, you've, you've confused me a little bit, because you just said that a windscreen is a nice-to-have, but then you just said that one or the other is required.
It would be my, neither are required by anybody.
Okay.
But, it would be my preference to put in the acousta fence. It is more expensive, but I feel it's more respectful to the neighbors.
As far as entering and exiting the property, as I think actually both for, for John and the applicant, what's the feasibility of locating signage at the Dynamo entrance and using that as the primary entrance? At least for the left turns in and out, routing traffic that way, instead of focusing on that area up at Shallowford. I mean, because if, if we're saying they can't make a left in or out, and making a right around the world isn't a simple thing. So, again, I think if we can move it up, is it, I think we need to look at, what I'd like information on is if it would make for a better situation if, if left turns were being made at the Dynamo entrance, because I don't know that, I don't know the topography off the top of my head on that area.
Well, these, these connect, these two lots.
Right, exactly.
I just figure everybody was taking a left.
The connection is already there. I, I would like to see a formalized means to, to drive that traffic to a better location, if that is the Dynamo entrance.
Yeah, I figured the Dynamo entrance would be the one, everybody takes a left in and a left out.
But I think without signage and clear messaging, they're not going to.
People get confused, got you.
So, Dynamo has asked us not to do that because they're so congested. So, when you go into Dynamo's entrance, there are like four-foot-high s...
Enchens?
Yes, that, like a brother word. So, that you cannot, you know, one is clearly an entryway and one is clearly an exit, which is part of their problem. So, their, their customers have to go through this kind of labyrinth, go back around and come out the same entrance. They would like our customers to enter from our own entryway, and it's, it's kind of convoluted. It's, you go down a long entry drive in Dynamo, you have to go through a really long parking lot to the back of the building, and so we're hoping to alleviate that traffic, not to create more by sharing that as a primary entrance and exit.
I, I think unfortunately, human nature says that whatever way people find to be easier is the one they're going to do. I think you're going to have a lot of Dynamo customers trying to cut in through your property if it's a shorter path of the back of the building.
We want the Dynamo customers to have relief, but we do not want to clog up their, you know, their customers.
I, I just, unfortunately, I think what you're going to do is make a mess for everyone if there isn't clear messaging and clear guidance of how to use this.
I, I'm just wondering if, you know what they do at the Greek Orthodox Church? They have cops out there directing traffic when, for services, for when the kids get out of school.
They don't do it for school anymore?
Hmm?
They don't do it for school anymore?
Well, they...
But, they do do it for the events, they do do it on Sunday.
And it must be Cliff Valley.
Cliff Valley does have an officer there every morning and every afternoon, yes.
So, essentially, that's, that might be what has to be done, because I, I understand what you're saying, and if there isn't a very convenient way, not that, you know, people should have to work a little bit for, for stuff, but it, it is going to be very complicated and hard. Well, not, not impossible, because I, I think, where my, Pine Forest Drive now, where that horrific weird modern house was built, now, Pine Forest Drive, they have fallen to the road.
I actually just mentioned that to John today, they just added those in the last two months to, to force no lefts in or out of that neighborhood, and amazingly, no one's mowed them down yet. I actually just drove through there after our meeting, and I actually, especially looked to see if there was damage, and shockingly, it's not.
So, I'm just wondering if maybe that solution is going to be police.
That's a really good idea, and the good thing about this relationship is that the swim meets are only twice a month. Every day, other than those days, their parking lot is empty, it's very easy in and out, it's, there's, there's no conflict. So, we're just talking about two days a month, and we could certainly hire police officers to help us with that.
My last question is the business model, is this going to be a club, or, tell, just tell me about it, I don't have to guess.
Yeah, it's a private club, it's for profit, we're going to have memberships available on all different tiers, and then also drop-in pay-to-play. And we, we're going to have handicap program for differently-abled athletes, we're hoping to have lots of school programs, so we're going to have a really broad model, and certainly going to want to tie into Dynamo and to have reciprocal agreements with them on memberships and usage of the courts.
They do give a 10 percent discount to Chambley residents, though.
Absolutely.
Just one last thing, you can open your, in your packet, you brought up St. Pius, are you working on a principle and agreement with them for their athletic program to use these facilities on a formalized basis?
Because they have, they are required to have five court, tennis courts to use for games, it will, they can use our facilities for practices and for friendlies, but not actually for their actual, you know, high school tennis meets. But I did meet with them for a few hours, we talked about different programs, they're wanting to have a fundraiser every year, pickleball fundraiser for one of their staff members, so we talked about a lot of shared usages, and also employing the St. Pius High School students as employees would be nice. I just wanted to mention, though, on the fencing, that if the fencing isn't approved, I, I don't see how it won't kill the project. Particularly because the fencing ordinance is four feet height, I just can't have a four-foot fence. It just, it just is going to kill the project.
I think there's some, we can work through that, I think. I'd love to see, if we are going to have a chain link fence that's facing the street, I'd love to see a very unique windscreen potentially, that just has some great art on it, or something that we can do to, to make it not look like a 10-foot chain link fence, but we can talk about that. Is there any more discussion on this item?
Nope.
Thanks so much. Oh, and for the record, that 10 percent discount was a complete joke, so please don't, don't hold that to me.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Yes, yes.
She is a complete joke.
Yeah, exactly. All right, so that brings us to our favorite part of the night. Well, excuse me, we have nothing under mayor and council items, but it does bring us down to our favorite part of the night, we're down to public comment. So, I need to read the rules before we have anybody come up. The mayor is a presiding officer, all remarks shall be addressed to the city councils at body, not to the individual member. Anyone wishing to speak shall come to the microphone, give their name, address, and city clerk, limited marks to three minutes, and my good friend, Councilman Stovall here will be the, the clockkeeper, unless further time is granted by council. Not to speak a second time until everyone wishing to speak has spoken once, and no one can speak more than twice. Please do not speak unless you have the microphone and have been recognized. With the rules read, is there anybody that'd like to talk, public comment? Melody, please come on up.
Hello, thanks. Hi, I'm Melody Euken, I live at 1990 Commodore Lane, Chambley, 30341. My ongoing concerns about an Airbnb that's next door to me, Jimmy and Mayor are aware. I spoke to Mayor Mock prior to the budget meeting, just to let him know. I did have a nice meeting with Officer Robbins, he totally understands my frustration, he's been wonderful. We're trying to do a workaround on how to get evidence when this problem comes up. So, I want to say in defense of the Airbnb, as much as I would love to have a real owner living there, I've not had a problem with noise, it's the parking, and your ordinance is very distinct, they can only park on the driveway, even their guests, only four cars on the driveway. And what's happened, and I know it's them, the reason why I know is the two houses across the street from me have no garage. One had long-term renters, I knew them, if their car wasn't there, they weren't home. The one that's next to that has been renting for three years, I know her car, if her car is not there, she's not home. If the Airbnb is not renting, there's no, that's also no garage, it just has a carport, the parking on the street is never a problem. When it is a problem, and it's not every time, is when there's a renter there, there are times that the street gets completely clogged. I've taken pictures, sent them to Officer Robbins, all that. He needs evidence, he needs more evidence. At this point in time, he had me timestamp, downloaded timestamp app, he said, he told me how he would like me to do that. me how he would like me to do that. Why I'm coming to you, and Mayor Mock said it would be you, is he thinks to, because the argument that she has is that it could be not an Airbnb renter, but maybe they don't have a renter and it's one of their friends that are staying there and doing that, and then there's no rule for that, they can park anywhere. But I don't believe her. I don't believe her. Frankly, I told him straight that she's lying, I know what's going on here. Officer Robbins suggested possibly an amendment to your ordinance that when they rent out the Airbnb, that they have to register, the renters have to register their driver's licenses for whoever is going to be staying there, and then we know. And that was the suggestion, and I thought it was a good one. And look, I'm not looking to pick on her, I know who, and also, I'm not like the pain in the neck neighbor. My neighbors are relying on me to do this because one of them travels constantly, when he comes home, it's like, what's going on with the Airbnb? The other two are long-term renters, you know, they don't have the skin in the game. And the other ones are just, they're just like kind of doing their thing, you know? But it is also a very narrow street, short, narrow street.
Sorry, that's, sorry, Melody, that's time.
So if you could take that into consideration, I'd appreciate it. Thank you. Got a lot on your plate, thank you for that.
Anyone else like to address city councils tonight?
I'm Caroline Chestnut-Lessley, 1459 Council Buck Drive. I had an interesting meeting today and saw the new potential streetscape out here. I think the long-term plans are great. I think that there is a serious need for a temporary situation for better parking in this area. You have a perfect opportunity, tearing the building down, to put in a gravel lot because it would be temporary until the parking deck and the development behind us is built. Then you would have public parking that's reasonably close and visible. The city of Roswell has a very successful downtown business area with bars and restaurants, and they have a giant parking lot behind all of that. And it's not a fabulous parking lot, it's an old church parking lot, it looks like. But I think that you all put in the PUD zoning district, which required zero parking, and that there's a responsibility on the city to provide parking, not three and four, five years down the road, but currently. And the new plan has zero parallel parking spaces. So what parking is available out there now is going to be gone until the four- or five-year down-the-road development. So I think that you all seriously need to consider a temporary plan to have parking for this area because the people that come to the Chambly Tap and Market are not pedestrians. There's some pedestrians from the city of Chambly that live close, but there are tags from Fulton County, there are people that drive to Chambly, and you're creating this environment, which I think was intentional, to have a vibrant downtown 24 hours a day, or at least until 11 o'clock at night. But I think that there's also a responsibility on the city's part to provide a temporary parking situation until the public parking that's going to come online in the future is installed. So I thought I'd make that a part of the public record.
Thank you so much. Anyone else out there willing, wanting to address council tonight? Do we have an executive session tonight? All right, with that, we're done.